Stand for the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic of the states. For which it stands. One nation. Under God, indivisible, and just as for all. Thank you. Mr. Needles, can you take role?
Sure. Commissioner Neary?
Here.
Commissioner Rakowski?
Here.
Commissioner Guardioso?
Here.
Commissioner Baacko?
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker?
Here.
Lisa Catania? And myself, George Needles, present.
Thank you.
And I'm present.
Mike Pierce is present also. Like to thank everybody for attending Facebook tonight. We are streaming live again from Facebook. This broadcast will be replayed on YouTube again later this evening. Just some general announcements. Delco or County will be entering to the Yellowface midnight tonight. Our commissioner's meeting scheduled for next Thursday will be open to the public with a maximum of, with the maximum capacity of 25. The township is working on a contingency plan if more than 25 attend the meeting. George, with that said, can you please ask the public if there's any statements they would like to have read? The record?
Sure thing. I know we have a couple of people on the call tonight. So if anybody would like to speak, the process is that you press star six on your telephones. You have two minutes to give your, to make your statement. You're going to want to say your name and your address. And after two minutes, if you could please re mute your phone. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nicole Holberg. How are you all?
Good.
Can you hear me? Oh, good. Hi. Sorry, I'm very new to this process. So any guidance you folks can give me would be very much appreciated.
Sure, Nicole, if you could just, sorry Nicole, if you could just give us your address as well?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Sure, if you could just give us your address?
Sure, I live at 214 Johnson Ave. That's in Upper Chichester.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I just had a few questions. I understand, is Chief Bush attending tonight?
Chief Bush is not attending tonight.
Okay, alright, that's fine. I have some questions for him specifically. So I can wait until next time. But is this the best way to do that? Would be to enter them now or?
Chief Bush has an open door policy. So you're more than welcome to contact him at the township. You can either do that through the police station. Or if you're having trouble getting hold of him, you know, you can contact our township manager. He'd be happy to set up some type of a meeting. So that way you can speak with him.
Fantastic. And who is the township manager?
His name is George, speaking with you earlier tonight.
I'm so sorry, the audio keeps cutting out. Could you please repeat that for me?
George Needles, he's our township manager.
George, okay, thank you very much. Alrighty, I will contact George. And yeah, I had spoken with the sergeant yesterday over the phone. He thought it might be possible to catch him today. So yeah, I'll follow up and thanks, I appreciate it.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who can make a statement?
Is the video streaming somewhere on Facebook? Is the video live?
We are live on Facebook.
Okay.
It's our township Facebook.
Yeah, I'm looking at the event and the page. I'm sorry?
Nothing.
Okay.
Did you find us?
Yeah, like I said, I can see your page. I can see your, the event for this. But there is no video that I can see. Could you see me?
George, could you address that?
Yeah, I can go check with Andrew who's in there streaming it right now just to make sure it's coming through. But it shows on our side, so let me check.
Oh, it does? Hey, Chris?
Yeah, it is. It is streaming. You just have to scroll down. Scroll up, rather. Scroll up. But it is on Facebook streaming right now.
Okay. This is, by the way, we're both recording. Yeah, the only video I can see is something from Upper Chichester has talent or something.
George?
Seeing none, I believe we should move on to the next part of the meeting.
Alright, let the record show there are no more citizen comments. And we'll move on to our engineer's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. First on my agenda is the 2020 road program. We received bids today. There were four bidders. This was done through Penn bid, so it was done through a public bid service. The total, the low bid was $431,954.50. That includes several of the alternates. It's actually less than what we had anticipated when we gave you the cost estimate about a month and a half ago. The high bid was at $508,000. So we have some pretty tight bids and we're pleased with that. In your packet, I believe, is the bid tab. But I also forwarded, and you'll have that ready for the meeting next week, is per ward and the numbers per ward. So we took the bid numbers and we put it into the street list. So you can see the distribution of funds based on the street list. Next, if possible, I'd like to get a recommendation, or I'd like to put forth a recommendation for a ward and would ask for approval of that contract. Next on my agenda is Wawa project status update. We have received some revised plans. We're working through some requests that the developer has had with Gibbons Park. The, we have a group, a task force that's going through that to determine what improvements need to be done there and how it's best done. The rest of the Wawa project, they have submitted. So we're hoping that we'll see a Penn dot permit probably within 30, 60 days. Kate's Glen, because of the COVID quarantine, we weren't able to have the meeting with the residents that we were expecting. But in order to get the work done that needed to be completed because of the default of the developer, we thought it was best to start that project. Residents were notified. Thank you, George, for getting that letter out. Michael for helping with that. And the contractor has started. The vacant lots have been cleared. They will be reseeded. All of the debris that were on those vacant lots has been removed. And as of tomorrow, they will start on the contract portion of that project. The vacant lots were cleared as part of a time of immaterial that would be taken from the escrow. Next thing on my agenda is the Bethel and Mill Roundabout lighting. We received word from the consultant for Penn dot that there is a need to make some changes in the lighting through the roundabout to conflicts with utilities. There are four options that they gave us. I went back to them and asked if they do a fifth. Because in all of this, the utilities were getting first dibs at where they wanted to put their utilities. They came back, consultant came back, indicated that there are many concessions with utilities as could be done. In particular, the Verizon poles and the Pico poles. So we do have two options that I think are viable. One is more aesthetically pleasing than the other. I'm going to suggest to you that we do option four, which will be a combination of the street lights and pedestrian lights through that area. However, they will be pushed back to the backside of the sidewalk. So they'll be at the outer edge of the sidewalk and not between the curb and the sidewalk. And I think that's the best option for us to get this done aesthetically pleasing as well as performance compliant. The signage project, we have gotten the mockups for the welcome signs as well as the street name signs. I need a okay. We're actually, Garden State needs an okay from the township because we're doing the purchase of those through the contract that we have with that company. We will be moving forward once we get those mockups approved and sent back to various entities. Casey Sign is the subcontractor for Rennell. They're local, they're Upper Chichester Township Company. They're working under Rennell doing the welcome signs. And the street signs is the same contractor that we use for all of the township signs. The streetscape, I have on George's desk the contracts for the streetscape. We're still waiting the Penn dot permit for the ADA ramps. We're expecting that within the next 30 days. And we'll give the contractor a notice to proceed once we have that HOP returned from Penn dot. Have a few Penn dot 322 follow-up items. We, Al Tommaselli, who is the traffic consultant, has done a review of the traffic signals. We will have another shot at that once there's a final design done. This is just a preliminary. And we made several comments that are policy issues more so than material specific. So the devil's in the detail. We'll see the details at a later date when we see the final plan. They're aware of what touch materials that we want to use, what we want to see on the signal plan that meets the township standard as well as Penn dot standards. And then we'll move forward from there. As you are aware, I sent a letter to Penn dot requesting the garage door, for lack of better term, on Flora Lane. We did verify that the size of the garage door will allow for the traffic movements. Al Tommaselli is going to verify once he does a final sign before that size is actually decided. I wanted to mention that. Otherwise, I can just report you have a progress. You do have a copy of my report. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Lisa, I just have two comments. Kate's Glen project, there are mounds of dirt on a couple of vacant properties. I spoke with George today. I think we're going to see any possibility of how we can remove those mounds. I know the residents have asked if that could happen. So the topsoil is in pretty good shape. So I'm thinking that we can use that through certain areas throughout the township. And then item number two, the 2019 signage project. I believe it was a month or two ago, the board had discussed what type of signs that we were going to purchase that we agreed upon. So I'm going to talk to George to make sure that the board has a clear understanding of what it is. And if not, we need to most likely take an official vote of what signage that we're going to take.
Okay, okay. We'll just put that on hold then.
I have one question. The alternate stuff that's in the road program, the speed humps on Cherry Tree Road? Are they part of it?
They are. If you look, the two speed cables are the two speed humps that will be placed between 322 and the school. We have specific, I have the location if you'd like to see it.
Whenever we get like a rough drawing or something, some of the residents have been asking me about it.
Yep.
Alright, thank you.
Lisa, I have a question. Just a reminder, I just got the letter from DePonzo. And if you could update us on Creekside when you get a chance. And as I said last month, if we need to follow what we need to do with Kate's Glen, then I'm happy with doing that. They've been putting this off too long.
What I might suggest is that we pull the agreement, the developer's agreement, have the solicitor take a look at that developer's agreement. I don't know whether it has in it that the developer's agreement that was utilized for Kate's Glen has. So we just want to verify that. Because otherwise, we will get into a legal process.
Okay.
Because of the language. Just to update everyone, we have been for over a year working with this developer to complete the punch list for the, what they're calling the carriage houses on Village Way in Creekside. There's some drainage problems. This morning, I spoke to the COA president who reiterated that there are issues with erosion and mud getting into the back area, their porch areas. The developer's engineer today would like to meet out there while it's pouring rain to verify that there's no problem. I disagree that I believe there is a problem there. I took video after a rain, the day after a rain, showing the puddles. And think it needs to be fixed. And I'm going, I said it already, this afternoon, back to him saying that my punch list.
Are there any other comments for our engineer? If not, we'll move on to our solicitor.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Hold up, Mike, hold up.
Sorry.
I don't know, is one mic going there, George? Sorry about that. Can you hear me? Okay. Lisa, where did Meeting House Road alternate come from? Where does that?
We were giving, given a list of, these are the streets that absolutely will be done. And then others that were listed as alternatives. Don't know that I can answer that question better than that.
I can answer that. It's the fourth ward side. And it was provided by Jim Putman and requested to be put on as the alternate by Joe.
Alright, because I know we did it the last few years. And it hasn't been, I know the one side is pretty bad. But as you know, it's Ward one on one side, Ward four on the other side. So and the other thing, the chairman already addressed the issue about the signage. But are we going to see a final of what Gibbons Park would look like for the whole board before everybody acts on it? Or do we make the final decision on it?
I actually had a conversation with Brian Seidel, the township planner, on Tuesday. We're going to complete what we feel the recommendation for that area, Gibbons Park, as well as what the other corners of that intersection will look like so that it's cohesive. It will be conceptual only on that side. Because until we have a developer or redevelopment in those areas, nothing will be done. And we want to make sure that everybody's on board. So once we have that, we will come to the board for a final approval. There's some signage issues. We're trying to determine what's the best way of making sure that Gibbons Park is noted at the park. Because now the signage is very minimal. And Brian has some alternate wall and the makeup of that wall.
Okay, now the 322 Penn dot, and it's been brought back to us by the committee quite a few times. Where do we stand if one of those that were recommended by, that came through by the Delaware County Planning Board? Are we anywhere near making those changes at the same time with the LURDA, George? Do you know? I mean, I know there were some recommendations all the way through Upper Chi, through the planning committee and the committee from 322. But have we acted on all this so we could proceed with the LURDA that we were discussing to try to bring businesses in Upper Chi? Or any kind of a business?
Well, zoning and LURDA are two different things. So the first, so the township undertook a project where we contracted the Delaware County Planning Department to be our planner. And there was a task force put together. That task force did a redevelopment revitalization plan for USA 322. And during the course of that plan being developed, the board actually acted on most of those zoning changes in advance. So remember, we did a large portion of the parcels to the IC zoning. Now, there is some discussion about incorporating and coming up with a village zoning along that Bethel Avenue area. Nothing has been built out on that because I think that that was going to be done as more of a centralized plan for that road. As well as putting an IC zoning over top of the old, I don't want to say the name wrong. So the school that is on Bethel over there. However, that, you know, that is still an institutional use in a residential neighborhood at this point. So nothing's been changed for that. As far as the LURDA goes, my intention is for us to talk about that at our planning session to kind of get, to dig deep into that. You know, again, that goes back to, there's a couple of different things there. Yes, there's an opportunity there. But then that's also got to be a decision of the board as to, is that something that's going to make sense in this time? So it's kind of on that list of, hey, we're in COVID-19. Is this going to be a project that's going to be undertaken at this point? Keep in mind, the construction for most of the 322 area is not going to start till roughly 2024. So you're talking like a 2026, 2027 completion date. So while we are getting a little bit of bites on some things here, I don't necessarily know how much construction activity will get along that corridor as a business could open up and subsequently be shut down if they can't get anybody in the door.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to our solicitor's report.
Thank you, everybody. I will have a formal written report for the time for the meeting next week. But just to give you some of the things that are on there. Today, I sent over the redrafted township manager contract for your review pursuant to the board's direction. Township manager asked me to do some research regarding our ATV dirt bike ordinance and to look at that and some potential revisions. So I've started that. I've been dealing with some, a property in Yorktown and a permitting issue with Gabrielle and George to get that straightened out. The Peach Street Stormwater Easements, I've done the drafts of that. I've worked with the engineer to get the descriptions and everything. I sent over drafts of those just for, excuse me, consideration. The developers' escrow agreements for Willowbrook should be completed within the next week or two. It's sent out to the other side for their signature and your comment. We're working on various applications that are coming before the planning board. I've been working with Barbara Kelly on those to get the matter squared away. We're reviewing the application for the zoning change for the Gagliotti and McDermott, changing that from residential to industrial or commercial. That will eventually be coming before the board. It will go to the planning board first for their review and comments. And then we'll come to the board for a decision on that. We reviewed and we sent out several right to know requests that have been received by the township and are revised the township escrow forms. Other than that, it was mostly routine matters related to the township.
Any questions for our solicitor? Alright, if there's no questions, we'll move on to our manager's report.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out tonight and the people listening to this, thanks for coming in. I know this is not the ideal situation for a public meeting. But I think everybody's doing the best they can under the circumstances here. The first item I have is short-term, long-term planning session. That is set for June 14th. Is everybody okay with the afternoon starting at noon, running till about 4 o'clock?
I am good.
Yes.
Alright, I look forward to a lot of good things coming out of that. They've been very productive in the past and I think they'll continue to be very productive. We have an escrow release for Mark Wurzalis. This is a project where Mark was going to take on the project. And I believe he has scaled down what he's intending to do. So at this point, essentially, there is degrading application when not, we wouldn't need it. So we'll need to refund that to him. We had a request from McGinley Holdings for their escrow release. Lisa and I have been trying to work with Mark McGinley for quite some time on getting his ASB build-in. He still doesn't have the correct ASB build submitted to the township. So I reached out to him again, asked him to please update that and get that into the township. So that's on hold. We have an Old Chester Water Authority escrow release from 2015 that's come through that we'll be able to approve. I passed out some information last week about the need to get a full-time administrative employee in the township. We have a part-time person who's working tonight, trying to get this all together, that was budgeted to go full-time. So if the board would look at that, please, and give me thoughts. I did give a little cost comparison since we obviously are going to be down some revenues this year of what we'll need to do to make sure that we can afford that. As far as the COVID-19 update, so the township has been open to accepting permits, accepting applications for other things. We are only allowing one person in the building at a time. We are obviously going into yellow in Delaware County tomorrow. So there'll be more exciting things coming out. We're going to be talking about outdoor dining a little bit later. And hopefully have a discussion of what we can do with that to help the restaurants. As well as, there are some things that we can open up a little bit more. We'll have an update for Brian Horn, the rec director. As you know, the rec board is following the Pennsylvania Recreation Society guidelines. So we'll go from there. And I believe that is all I have at this point.
Any questions for our township manager? Alright, if there's no questions for our manager, we'll move on to our commissioner's report. We'll start with Commissioner Joe Baacko.
Thank you. First, highway and sanitation. Monday, we brought all the guys back in together. Tried to get them somewhat back to normal. The recycling plant in Delaware opened back up to us. So we're going to start separating recycling and trash again. So any residents, if you're listening, try to, you know, we were trying to improve on our recycling the way we were asking yous to put it out to help us stay away from fines at the recycling plant. So if you can get back on that for us. Some of the things like the highway guys started a little road project, the sinkhole, you know, getting back to some of the normal work today. That was up on Ruth Avenue. So it's good, you know, I think they're glad to be back. I mean, it's been tough, but hopefully they can get their, you know, some of the work they had scheduled for this year done. So we're watering utilities. I'm sure if you haven't heard, most people familiar with this Delcor situation. The county took a vote last night to, I guess, try to keep it as a municipality. But I think there was an injunction filed. So I wish I could tell everybody. there was an injunction filed, so I wish I could tell everybody more, but that's all I know right now. Our sewer authority, any other reports are on file. Everything's pretty smooth there still. The only other thing I have is, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, that the owner of the property at the Hamby Goat Farm, we call it, wants to change what he originally was going to do there, and he should be submitting some stuff. And as soon as we get some type of submission, I'd like to meet with the residents in the area and get their thoughts and feelings. That's all I have unless there's any questions.
Joe, just to update you on street lighting, on Election Day, I was reported that three street lights were out on Floraleen. That is being worked on. And also, I know there's some power outages in my ward, Riviera, I believe also on Floraleen. The township has contacted PICO. We're trying to work with them to get the power back on as fast as possible. I think some areas are scheduled for the Sunday, but again, we're working with them to try to get that up and running as quickly as possible.
All right. I mean, the streetlights, you got the poll numbers? Did you give them the?
Yes, that's all, that's all reported in.
Okay. Go get them.
Are there any other questions for Commissioner Baacko?
Sure.
All right. If not, we'll move on to Commissioner Nicole Whitaker.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. From my reports, everything will be on file. The library report is in your packet. Just a couple of highlights, the library is going to curbside pickup, so individuals can go onto their Facebook page and our website, and there's the, you know, they can select what they would like to check out, they will pick it up, they will have it available at the curb, and then there, we always have the drop-offs out front, so you can drop all your returns into the drop-offs. Also have the mobile printing, that information is available as well, so if you want to do the mobile printing from your phone, you have to hit the app, and then you can, you know, download the process for mobile printing. Again, all that information is in your packet. And then, the library letter, I assume George, that went out? The Kingsman Road, okay.
It has gone out, and we've already got some responses in.
Okay. All right, great. And then going on to heart and soul, the survey is still available for residents of Upper Chi, just the township to complete. They're going to be inserting information into, I should say, working with some of our local businesses, specifically restaurants, to have that be a part of their takeout. Like, if you put a menu in the bag, they'll put a copy of the pay link for residents to fill out the survey. We're trying to, again, get a increase in numbers. I believe the last count was 160, so we're still far away from 300, which was the goal. We're trying to, you know, think outside the box in order to get those surveys completed. The second newsletter has gone out. If you would like to receive the newsletter, the heart and soul newsletter, please contact Barb Kelly at the township, and she'll ask you for your email address so that you can get on the email list for the newsletter. And then the Linwood Heights, I asked Barb to give the board some additional time through the project and then invite them to the July caucus meeting, if that is acceptable by the board.
Sure.
That's all that I have for tonight.
So, for the Linwood Heights project, Commissioner Whitaker asked if the board would be interested in the July timeframe for the individuals to come out and present, so let's have an answer by next week so we know that, so we know how to proceed.
And then also, if you have any comments, please send your comments or feedback regarding that to Barb.
So, any questions for Commissioner Whitaker? If not, we'll move on to Commissioner Edward Kowski.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I had one quick question. I was struggling with the buttons. Could you just repeat the name of who is your contact to be added to the newsletter?
George, can you?
Yeah, so typically, we don't take the public comment, outside the public comment section, but the newsletter, to reach the heart and soul newsletter, you're going to reach out to Barbara Kelly at the township. You can call the township offices, and she would be able to get that to you.
Thanks very much. Sorry about that.
No problem.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Edward Kowski.
Yeah, all the reports for the medic unit I gave out tonight, Nicole, yours are in your bin. It's a quarterly report for the medics of the Brooklyn Fire Company. Emergency management's doing very well. Fire departments, George, do we have to do this tonight or next week for the resolutions?
This will be for next week. It's next week.
Okay. We have a couple of resolutions for the Upper Chi Police Department and also the volunteer fire departments. We have a resolution for an agreement for training in some vacant properties at Pendott or training within a few months out there on 322. And the last is a Helms Manor issue with the traffic common. George and I, George has a letter here for me to go out hopefully tomorrow, myself, the manager, the township engineer, the traffic engineer, and I also added Chief Bush, there's some traffic issues over in Helms Manor. We would like to meet with the residents in the week of July 14th, I think it is, July 15th in that area, and try to put a date out there.
Yeah, we're good for Monday, the 15th.
So, we're going to do Monday, the 15th, July 15th here at the township building. It'll be virtual also. We'll be meeting with the residents over there. Some of these issues, we're already in with the contract for the street program for this year, so we're trying to get everybody's opinion and some of the comments and the decision that we brought back to the board of commissioners. That's all I have.
Any questions or comments for Commissioner Kowski? Let's move on to Commissioner Joe Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President. The financials will be available next week. The list of bills for the bills that were paid last week is already in there. There will be more checks run next week. There is in your package a draft proposal from Axon for cameras, body cameras for the officers. I'd like you to seriously consider doing this. We think that over half of the revenue, half of the expense can be covered by police photographs. Photographs from our current system, our car system, have been very helpful, and the cameras on the phones have been helpful. And I think in light of what has happened over the last month or so, that the more protection we get for our officers in terms of body cameras and for the public so that they are protected, that this would be a good proposal. And it's a payment of approximately $30,000 a year for five years, 35, but the entire total is 152. So, I'd like you to seriously consider adopting that next week, and that's all I have.
Any questions for Commissioner Neary?
Can I just make a comment about the cameras?
Yep.
So, that, it's also for car cameras and body cameras, so as you know, we already have the car cameras in, so part of the cost associated with that is just essentially, we need new cameras in the cars, so they would be replacing the car cameras and then adding two body cameras per year. So, that would basically allow us to have two individuals on each platoon have body cameras on 24 hours a day. The costs associated with the car cameras portion is already budgeted, and like Joe said, we looked at the revenue from the photographs, so that's the videos and the photographs that typically get sold to lawyers or insurance companies, and we believe that we can cover the rest of the cost through that line item.
And as an addendum, they will provide us with the cameras over three years, but they're financing it over five.
George, George, you said, what was the cost for the cameras we have right now? What are you?
Well, I'd have to look up the contract. I can give you a breakdown of what the cost is that's associated with the car camera portion and the body camera portion. So, we currently have car cameras that need two of them to be replaced, so this will be the replacement of the two for this year, and then the addition of two body cameras.
Two body cameras for every car? Or for, how's that going to work?
Two body, so we would get two body cameras for the entire police department and one individual on each, I'm sorry, so two individuals on each platoon would have them on.
Okay. I mean, I just, I mean, I understand we get to some of the revenue back with the pictures and the stuff going back and forth to the lawyers, evidence and all that stuff, and you're talking $30,000 for five years. At the same time, we have a, as what you said, a planning session coming June 14th, but we meet next week. I mean, we're on a position where I got a letter from you not too long ago, George, about, just about the economic, that we're facing economic contraction, that we need to see what's going on, and if we already have the cameras, not just the cost, we need to know where our money is, but at the same time, maybe Mr. Pierce could answer this, and I'm a little nervous about the body cameras, is how much liability are we facing with the body cameras if we start using them? Is there a potential more?
No, actually, my understanding is the presentations that I've seen is actually it's better on your insurance because there's more documented evidence to, a number, I guess the easiest way to say it, is a number of the claims are not exactly accurate, and the experience, at least in Haverford and in Prospect Park, and a lot of the claims were actually eliminated with the utilization of the body cameras, and they were actually able to have some savings on their insurance coverage costs when those were properly instituted. So, I, I mean, that's a general answer to the question, but, you know, my understanding is that it's actually beneficial to the township.
All right. And then, just to your point, as you know, we had that complaint about two months ago from a resident who said that they were accosted by an officer, and because we had a camera in the phone, or in the car, rather, I'm sorry, they kind of went away.
Oh, absolutely. I just, like I say, I mean, it's just, we have a planning session, I like to see our numbers, I'm not trying to, you have our budget coming up that we're going to start. Mr. Neary, you're very well into that. June's coming up already. We don't know what money we're going to get from the county, and I just, I understand, I'm okay with the cameras that are in the cars right now. I didn't realize they were in that bad of a shape, but it's, is there something that we, I mean, I just wanted to see the number, George, you said you're going to get it. Approximately what we're getting with the numbers for the pictures and stuff like that, what it costs right now just for the cameras and then the additional, but I understand it's a three-year thing, but we're getting it for five years. That's great. I just, we talk about not spending, but because of the COVID and everything, but we're spending, maybe it's me, I don't know.
So, I'd like to make a comment regarding the cameras. When this initially came up a few years ago, I spoke with the chief about the cameras and tested, you know, the body cameras at the time, so I definitely think they are, they can be helpful, right? And then if we have an insurance savings on it, that's even, that's even better. But what I would like to see is what additional training do our officers have? One of the things that I talked about, community policing, the chief and I have had conversations about that. I know that you are required to do trains each year, but to my knowledge, they're not required to do any sort of cultural sensitivity training or diversity training. That's what I would like to see. And thankfully, you know, we have a great police force. We have not had any issues with our officers in that regard, so I'm happy and I'm proud, proud to say that. But I would, I would like to see some additional training so that we're being proactive in Upper Chi.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll mention it to the chief tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I know, one last comment, then we'll move on. I know that this board has talked over the past years about getting body cameras also. I remember when I first got on the board, Commissioner Whitaker was trying to get cameras implemented throughout the township, you know, you know, through working with the board of, with everybody working together, we were able to accomplish that. We got them in the vehicle, so I think we should look at this. So, with that said, we'll finish up with my reports. License and inspections, the reports should be available to the board by next week. For planning, Jake's fireworks and AutoZone will be going before the Planning Commission on June 25th of this month, both for final land development. The 800 Galbraith Avenue, there's no action required at this time. I know that it's being reviewed. The plans, as indicated, were received on May 5th, 2020. Per Act 15, the start date of the time clock starts 30 days after the stay-at-home order is lifted. So, that's one thing I'd like to ask my solicitor tonight, if we're going into the yellow, would that be considered the state, the stay-at-home order lifted, or do we have to be fully in green for it to be lifted?
I believe that the, that it is within the yellow, and we've already taken steps, just to be clear, of having an extension letter for the Galbraith Avenue, and I believe that they are getting lined up for a meeting, and I know Barbara's been working with them on that.
Okay. Thank you. Zoning, the zoning board will have a hearing for variance setback requests. That is scheduled in July. I spoke with Barbara Kelly today. A while back, I had given her some updates regarding our zoning map. There was some, there were some discrepancies on there. She informed me that she has been working on it. I'm going to meet with Charlie tomorrow to see what discrepancies are. My goal is to have a updated zoning map that's accurate and reflecting our current zoning throughout the township very shortly. I also spoke with Lisa about it. I believe she talked to Charlie also. So, just hopefully that will be done sooner than later, so hopefully get that done over the next couple of weeks. I don't have anything else. If anybody has a question for me, I'd be more than happy to take it.
Hi, Mike. We have this item for outdoor dining under zoning, so essentially tomorrow, with the county going into yellow status, restaurants are going to be allowed to do outdoor dining. I was on a phone call the other day with the Commerce Department, the county, Delaware County Chamber of Commerce. So, the state has given restaurants guidelines on what they can follow for outdoor dining, which includes complying with local municipal ordinances. Right now, the outdoor dining is covered two ways with us. For permanent outdoor cafes, it's really dictated under our zoning ordinance, and for temporary, it's under that mobile food truck, non-permanent restaurant ordinance that we put out. I would really think, like the board to consider at the next meeting, passing a resolution waiving that fee until this is over for restaurants to be able to do the outdoor dining. I am awaiting from the county planning department some guidance on what type of barriers and what the setup should be. The two things that always come to mind for me with outdoor dining that's in our ordinances are the requirement of fencing or a barrier that can withstand, I believe it's 2,000 pounds of force, as well as insurance indemnifying the township. So, I think that we need guidance from the planning department before we do any kind of waivers on that kind of stuff, but I really think it would be good for the board to do for the restaurants, to give them some guidance. for the restaurants, to give them some guidance on what they can do for outdoor dining. We've been looking at this from like 15 different ways, possibility of doing it in our parks, possibility of doing it in other lands throughout the township, but I think we're going to have some pretty good guidance that I can get out to you guys on Monday or Tuesday to review, and hopefully you'll be in support of that, which I know you guys are in support of all the businesses, so I'm sure we'll have something great that'll come out for next Thursday.
George, I know that we discussed this earlier this week about waiving the fees. I have no problem with it. I'm more than happy to help our local businesses to get up and running again. I think it's a long time overdue. As you mentioned, I think the one, the one barrier that we're going to have is putting up a physical barrier, so what I mean by physical barrier is to prevent any type of traffic flow to interfere with the dining. So whatever we can do to work with our residents to make this, whatever we can do to work with our local dining establishments to make this happen, I'd be more willing to work with the board to see how we can implement this.
That's only going to come into play when they're facing like Chichester Avenue or something like that with the tables, right?
Anytime it abuts like a parking area or anywhere somewhere could drive, so, you know.
So we got, yeah, so we got the Thirsty Bulldog, Chi Cafe, Sage Diner has the parking lot if they want to put, you know, seating outside. The Greek, the Mad Greek is another one, but I believe they already have a barrier up.
But places where they can put some picnic tables out back and stuff, I think we can get a little more lenient.
Yeah, so if it's not like on a roadway or something, but most likely what's going to happen is like sections of parking lots are going to have to be blocked off, and then they would operate within that section of the parking lot.
Right, but where they can go like out back where there's no traffic and stuff, some of them can use the extra business, I mean, picnic tables, temporary tables.
Yeah, there's a pretty good guidance from the state on what they can do, and then there's also, I think the county's going to give us some good guidance on what kind of barriers would make sense, so.
Now, George, with this, with this, some of these don't even have it right now, but it could be temporary during the yellow phase, and then when we get into the green phase or vice versa, whatever it is, if they want to be permanent, then the barriers are going to have to be permanent, basically, if they're able to do, if they want to continue to do it. Is there anything that the county's offering, just be a temporary barrier compared to a permanent one, if they're not going to do it later down the road?
So that's the guidance we're waiting for from the county planning department. At this point, the gist of everything is that like, if a restaurant puts out a temporary area, it's going to look vastly different than what they would do in a, in a permanent situation.
Permanent.
And that's when, we have those two different ordinances, that temporary ordinance is really going to, it gives a lot more flexibility than that permanent ordinance. Permanent ordinance is to essentially construct a second dining room but with an exterior, you know?
Right. Mike, I do have one more question. I heard Mr. Pierce say something about a possible extension on 800 Galbraith. What's going on with that, with 800 Galbraith? Who's requesting the extension? Them or us?
They are. They are, because, just because of the meeting logistics.
Our meetings, or the planning meetings, or?
The public meeting, their ability to get to and make presentations appropriately. So, yeah, we're trying to work with everybody so that they feel comfortable in dealing with a public meeting, whether it's electronic, some are okay with doing electronics, like the zoning hearing board has more problems because there's going to be an exchange of documents and presentation, and logistically, it's a little more difficult. So we're working with, with the applicants, and if, you know, if they're not comfortable, if they want to wait it out a little while longer so that they can, you know, make a regular presentation before a meeting, we're working with getting extensions for them.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Just, George, just with the yellow phase, can you, can we get a list of what exactly the yellow phase is, what can be open, what cannot be open, so that the board has a understanding? You know, just over the next day, day or two. So, anybody have any other questions for me? I'd just like to thank the public for coming out on Facebook tonight virtually and listening to the meeting. I'd like to thank our township for being patient. I know this has been a very long haul. I'm glad that we are finally entering into a yellow zone. I'm hoping we'll be entering into green zone very quickly after that. So again, I thank the residents for your support in working with the township. There's been minimal to no problems at all throughout this time, so I just want to say thank you very much.
So with that said, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.